Well, good afternoon, everyone. I think I'm the only thing standing between you and lunch, so I will try to be expeditious as we get through this PowerPoint presentation. All right, so we're going to open up Kansas Open Government Laws today. So we're going to first delve into COMA, which is the Kansas Open Meetings Act, and we're going to go into QARA, the Kansas Open Records Act. So there's about 42 slides. We only have like 30 minutes, so we will do what we can. But if you have questions, I will be available after our presentations to answer whatever you need to be, have questions about. So without further ado, see if I can get this to work. And there we go. We'll hop right into the Kansas Open Meetings Act. And so this act was first established in 1968, and the modern version is from the 1970s. So we'll, you've seen some changes from that, from that point A to point B, but the one we're using right now doesn't include a lot of the technological language from the modern era. So there might be an opportunity for the legislature to go back and make some edits in the future and kind of get some of this more social media era information included in the act. But until then, we're stuck with this act, and so we'll move forward with it. So there's about 4,000 instrumentalities of government in the state of Kansas. These local governments include townships. They include cities, water boards, school boards, and there's subordinate groups as part of those governing bodies as well. So that's a lot of governing entities subject to the COMA requirements that are found in the act. And so the Kansas Open Meetings Act is meant to be construed very broadly. It's a liberal law that is designed to give public input, to benefit the public, and any exceptions are to be construed narrowly. And so that is to give the public the most access to their public officials and what is going on in these government meetings. And so it's important to realize the act is meant for the public, and it's not necessarily meant to close off the information from them. So it's a very progressive era-oriented law, but it also serves a very important public purpose because we don't want the government officials doing things out of the public view. All righty. So who is subject to the Kansas Open Meetings Act? So this is an important question we get asked all the time, and it's essentially any government entity that has a legislative or administrative function and that has a meeting that is open, should be open to the public. Now, this would not include staff meetings of a governing body, so this would, that means the city manager and his staff, that would not be under the jurisdiction of COMA. But the governing body is, and the subordinate groups thereof are as well. So that could include the subcommittees of a governing body, of a city council. That could include the committee of the whole, and that's pretty common that you see in the community college level. In Johnson County, an example, they meet in a committee of the whole. That's subject to COMA. So if someone were to want to attend that or have knowledge of that meeting, that would be something that you would have to notify them of. And so you have cities, counties, townships, school districts, community colleges, watershed districts, rural water districts, drainage districts. Those would all be subject to COMA and would have to comply with the components of this legislation, this act. And so we look at the nature of the organization or the group in figuring out where their COMA applies. The designation in the statute is not relevant because if they are performing a function that would be considered something that would be a governance action, they're considering public policy, and they're a group of individuals, that would subject them to the COMA law. So that's important to realize. So, and I just want to reiterate, a staff meeting of a governing entity such as the city of Overland Park, the city manager and his senior staff would not be subject to COMA because they're not the elected governing body. They don't actually make the final decision on the public policy. So, some additional examples here, just want to make sure, these are kind of things you would typically see on a governing body and their subordinate groups. So you have the committee of the whole, regular committees, any subcommittees of those committees. In the larger cities in Wichita and Johnson County, you see lots of committees upon committees upon committees. But then you have the conference committees. The legislature is subject to COMA, but there are more generous exceptions to them than other governing bodies. So a conference committee is something you'd see in the legislative setting typically. Select committees, joint committees, caucus meetings unless they're closed off by the party rules or the rules of the House or the Senate, and work sessions. Work sessions of any governing body could be subject to COMA, especially if public policy is being discussed. Also, Supreme Court nominating commissions, one, you could see. Some COMA kicking in because they are performing a very significant public function, selecting a member of the highest court in the state of Kansas, the head of judicial branch. So that's another entity that would be subject to COMA. Okay. So another component of the Kansas Open Meetings Act that we need to discuss is what is a meeting? So it's any gathering or assembly in person or through any sort of electronic communication. This could be Zoom. It could be telephone. That would subject, as long as it's a meeting, it could be considered a meeting under the Kansas Open Meetings Act. The second prong of this is it must be a majority of the membership of a public body or agency. And so this is important to realize. If you're in a governing body of seven, six council members and the mayor, that mayor would in fact contribute to that, even though if they're not, in some cities, they're not part of this traditional governing standards. For that seven, the mayor would be, trigger that, so that our number would be four for a meeting to therefore be taking place under the prong that it has to be a majority and for the purpose of discussing the business or affairs of the public body. And so this gets to be challenging sometimes when you're attending events in your public function. So if there's a seven-person board, four of you would like to attend an event, maybe it's a charity dinner, if you guys attend that meeting and discuss public policy, the four of you, you've hit the magic number of four. You've hit the prong of discussing public business, and although it wasn't a traditional gathering in a sense, you would still gather to assemble together and that would, a number that is excess of a majority. And therefore, you've probably had an open meeting outside the confines of the Kansas Open Meetings Act. So we'll kind of look at each prong individually real quick and get a good overview of these. So a gathering or assembly, like we said, it could be through telephone. It could be for any other medium, WebEx. It could be from just taking little notes and passing them. It can really just be just about anything, but as long as some sort of communication or assembly or anything has taken place, that's how we get the gathering or assembly prong met. Informal discussions before or after a meeting, that could trigger the assembly or gathering prong of this test. And what you call it does not matter. You could call it a little get-together at the coffee shop, but if you have enough members, you could trigger the COMA threshold for a gathering. And so, majority of the membership, so you take the whole number, the next whole number of one half, so if you have seven, that would be four. If you have eight, it would be five. You include the mayor, if the mayor is elected separately. If you're in a commissioned government, typically a class-two city, of course, the mayor would come from within the body. But like the city of Olathe, they elect two at-large councilors, four ward councilors, and a mayor. The mayor would be part of that seven. And so it can be different than a quorum if there are different quorum requirements. That would be something to check with your city attorney or your school district attorneys to ensure you're in compliance, whatever quorum requirement is there. But for the purposes of COMA, it was a majority of membership of that body, so that's an important distinction. All righty. Discussion prong is an important one. So you do not have to take binding action to be subject to COMA, the discussion prong of this test. Simply talking about the public business is enough to trigger this, right? So this is the important trigger that would get you in some COMA trouble, and we'll talk about the enforcement action a little bit later in this presentation. So a meeting, discussion could include any stage of the decision-making process. It doesn't need to be just talking to your friend about, oh, I think this is a good idea. You don't have to be making the final action. Just any sort of discussion about the public policy of that governing body could trigger the discussion prong. Of retreats and meetings held in private could also trigger the prong. And even meeting with one person, and that person meets with another person, can trigger something called a serial communication, and that's when you start adding up the number of people, and once that hits a majority of discussion, you could actually have a COMA violation there as well. And so, you just got to be careful of what you attend. If you were going to an education conference in this room today, if we had a majority of a school board on here and they discussed public policy, that could look bad. That could be a COMA violation. So you always got to be careful you're not hitting that majority number if you're not noticing the meeting. Even if you don't talk about the public business, it could give the wrong message if you're all attending a public fundraiser together. So optics are everything, really. So it's always good to be careful so you are not sorry later. All right. So we reference briefly what a serial communication is. This is effectively when a majority of the membership, not meeting as a whole, but individually, I am person A, I talk to person B, then I later go talk to person C, and person C talks to person D. That hit the magic threshold on a seven-person board of four people communicating about a public policy. So you've had the discussion, you've had the majority, and frankly, that would be a mode of communication. You have the gathering, and so therefore you have made a public decision outside the confines of a public meeting, and therefore you have violated the Kansas Open Meetings Act. And so, the serial communication component can be difficult to fully comprehend. An example that usually comes up, and this is where you see this happen unfortunately, is when an email goes out to the governing body from a third party and someone replies, and then you've hit all the prongs without noticing the meeting. And it's unfortunate when that happens, but you violate the Kansas Open Meetings Act, and then that $500 fine's not going to pay itself, right? So, something to be very cautious of when you're working with emails and when you're analyzing how you should respond to a communication that has come into you. It's always good to check the email to ensure it hasn't gone the entire public body, and that way if you respond, you're not in violation of the Kansas Open Meetings Act. So there is no specific way of having to give notice. You don't have to publish it in a newspaper. You don't have to publish it online. But the only thing that must happen is if someone requests notice that a public meeting takes place, is your obligation as either the presiding officer, or you can delegate this role to somebody else, is that you can have, you have to provide some sort of notice. Usually, and that notice requirement only lasts one fiscal year. When that notice is starting to expire, you have an obligation to inform that individual as the presiding officer, or if you designate a staff member to do so, that their meeting notice request is about to expire. And so, meeting notice requests can be taken place orally, or it can take place in writing. The preferred method is in writing because that way there's a record of some sort to demonstrate that request has been made. And so the presiding officer, so that'd be the chairman of a board of county commissions, it could be the president of a school board, it could be the mayor of a city council or the mayor pro temp, depending on how the system works. That is their responsibility to ensure the notice requirement is fulfilled. And so a notice is simply a date, time, and location of where the public body is going to be meeting. There is no formal requirement that an agenda be created or presented, and so there's actually not a requirement at all to even have an agenda unless it's required by a city or school board bylaw or policy. And so, so meeting procedures are kind of left up to the individual body, but if you do produce an agenda, it's the appropriate thing to do to post it online. And so topics that will be discussed can be let know to the public. The public can be known to them so that they can make an informed decision on whether or not to attend the open meeting. So there is no requirement to mail out the agenda. You must simply make the agenda, if you are to produce one, available for obtainment by the person who would like to obtain it. All right, so moving right along. So this is, one has come up a couple times recently, so it's important to take note of this. So the use of cameras, photographic lights, and recording devices is permissible, and the public is able to do that as long as they're not being disruptive. If you're being disruptive and making the meeting difficult for the governing body to proceed with, that could become a problem. So you have the duty to be respectful of the governing body, but the governing body must also respect the ability of the public to have the ability to take records of what is going on, to record, take photos. So you just have to be reasonable in how this is interpreted and exercised. So there is also no public right to speak at an open meeting. It's probably in the best interest to hear and listen to your constituents, although there is no formal requirement unless it is enumerated in your board policies or your bylaws or, in the case of a city council, your ordinances. And so that's something to keep in mind. You also have a duty to make sure your location, that your meeting is taking place, is accessible to the public. So if you're going to be meeting on Zoom, well, the public needs to have some method of observing that Zoom meeting, an example. In balloting, if you're going to conduct an election or anything of that nature within your board, or if you're going to do a vote on a public policy, that vote is not going to be a secret ballot unless a statutory exemption is applicable. And so, in minutes, the really, the most formal thing about the minutes is the recording of an executive session motion. That is absolutely critical and is required by law. For other specifics about how the minutes are going to be conducted, it's best to consult with your city attorney, your school board attorney, whatever legal authority you have to assist you on what bylaws, ordinances, and policies are impacting your school district, city council, board of county commissions, or other such local government entity. So this is another one that we see frequently with COMA violations, and I'm sure you all saw the news in Johnson County, there was a big discussion over whether a COMA violation has occurred. And so that's an ongoing investigation by our office, so we'll, we'll see when that ultimately resolves, what our enforcement team has decided has occurred there. So this is an important one to really understand. And so, executive sessions are designed to allow certain matters to be discussed outside of the public view. An open meeting must first be convened, always, and then there must be a motion made to enter that executive session. And so there must be a specific time you're going to enter the executive session, and a specific time you're going to exit that executive session. You have no authority to extend that executive session while in that executive session. You must reconvene in your open meeting at the specified time that you had indicated in your initial motion, and at that point, you can make another motion to enter a second executive session and for a specified time. You must always have the time you're going to enter and the time you're going to leave. This is absolutely critical to convening in compliance with the executive session component of the Kansas Open Meetings Act. Yes, it's also always important to remember, no binding action can be taken in an executive session. You must exit the executive session, and then you must take that action in a open meeting. So as you're recording this in your minutes, it's important to follow the statutory formula that is presented to you in the Kansas statute, 75-4319. So you must make a formal motion, so the member of the governing body will make a motion. That motion will be seconded. That, that motion will then be voted on and carried. The complete motion must be recorded in the meeting minutes, and the minutes must be permanently retained in order to have evidence and supporting documentation about how this meeting was conducted. And there is a three-prong formula as how you're going to do this motion. You must cite a statutory justification from 754319. They're all written out for you. There are several to pick from. You must cite the statute that you were going to use. It can be the words of the statute, it can be the statutory authority, the citation, but you must cite something. The statement of just, of subject to be discussed, that's important. It could simply be, discuss upcoming legal matter with our attorney. So you have the justification, you would write the statutory sentence there, you would say the meet, with legal counsel over an important, impending legal matter, and you would say the time and place, the open meeting will resume. So, a good example of this is, I'm a city councilman, I have a friend seconding my motion. I would say, at 7:00 PM, we're going to enter a closed session to discuss something with, under the attorney-client privilege, and you'll put the statutory language for a pending legal matter, and we will resume the open meeting at 8:00 PM. And then, let's say I need more time. We'll come back at 8:00 PM, we will do the same thing again. An open meeting, I will make a second motion to enter that closed meeting, and then we will proceed with the exact same formula again and give a new time to return to the public session. So this is a issue of great importance to ensure you're complying with because this is where you can get some hiccups as a member of a governing body. Because it's your obligation as the elected official conducting the meeting and be participating in the meeting to understand this act and follow the procedures as enumerated in the state statute. All righty. So you must have a complete motion. The motion cannot be summarized, it needs to be exactly how it is. Of course, you can exempt the ums and ahs, that's, those aren't necessary to be in there. The motion needs to be placed within the confines of the meeting minutes. So we need the justification, statement or subject, and kind of when you're coming back. And so, I just can't emphasize this enough. Okay. Let's see, have we covered most of this already? Yes, just, I want to reiterate, you must come back to the open session to extend the executive session. That's the only way to do it. There's no loophole, no exception, you got to do it. So always plainly state the time instead of requiring attendees to do math. Don't say 30 minutes, don't say 15 minutes, say the exact time you're going to be coming back to the open session and the exact time you're going to be entering the executive session. Just be specific, it's okay. All right. And here are some commonly used justifications from the act, 754319. So you have the personnel matters of non-elected personnel. You can't enter this session and talk about filling a council vacancy, that's not going to fly, that needs to be done in a public session. You can always use the attorney-client relationship, provided you're actually talking about something under the attorney-client relationship. So pending litigation's a pretty easy one to justify for that, but if you're trying to use that for something else, I mean, you really got to be careful because you could find yourself in a COMA violation if you're using it willy-nilly just to get a, some sort of justification into a closed session. This isn't an end-all-be-all justification. You actually have to have a legitimate reason to speak to your attorney in that relationship. When you're trying to hire staff and get a good package together, employee, employee negotiations, there are other things such as data security and obtaining real property, you can also enter that, provided you don't make your final action within that executive session. That's always important. Do not make that final decision and make the vote, take the vote on it until you enter the open session again. So the investigative authority is vested in the Kansas Attorney General's Office and the county or district attorney. And so we can subpoena witnesses, take evidence, document, and other materials to determine if a COMA violation has occurred. We have a complaint form available on the website, ag.kas.gov, and there you, you will see an open government tab, and that is where you'll see a COMA, QARA complaint form, and you'll be able to file a complaint against the governing body that you may have, you think has violated the Kansas Open Meetings Act. And so, we can also do anything like other legal entity can. We can serve in derogatories, we can take things under oath. So it's a real proceeding, a real legal action we are taking when we're observing and enforcing violations of the Kansas Open Meetings Act. And so, you can receive a civil penalty of up to $500. So it's real, it's real painful, but that's per violation. So if you make several violations in the same meeting, that can rack up pretty quick. So you don't want to do that. You could require, be required to complete an attorney general-approved training program. We offer these throughout the state, and so you'd probably have to come see me one more time in order to complete that training. We can also order a cease and desist, or even nullify and void an action taken by a governing body, and so depending on when the time scale and timeframe of when that violation took place. So we could also charge reasonable expenses for our investigation, so. There's a lot that could happen as a punishment for violations of this act. So I think we're ready to hop on over to the Kansas Open Records Act. This one, we'll, we'll try to keep on going through and see how we're doing on time. I know you all want to get to lunch. All right, we're doing all right. We can probably get this done in 10, 15 minutes. All right, so Kansas Open Records Act. So this is an act that governs the records of public bodies within the state of Kansas. It just simply says, public records should be open for inspection. It was initially enacted in 1984, it's had a couple revisions since. The original version was actually 1957, but we are still operating on the basis of the 1984 act. There's been a few things changed here or there, but that's still the predominant base of the act that we're playing with right now. And so it simply provides the procedures for the public to view these records. It also provides kind of some basis and framework for how government entities should procure the records and provide them to the public body. So there's also a record requirement that each governing body have a records custodian who will serve as the Freedom of Information Officer to provide these records to the public. And so they, this individual has a special responsibility under Kansas law to provide a balancing of the needs of confidentiality of these records and also the needs of the public to have access to these very important records so that there can be transparency and openness in government. And so, who is subject to the Kansas Open Records Act? It's typically public agencies. So that could be the state, any political or taxing subdivision thereof. So this would include the school districts, the city councils, the township boards, and the instrumentalities thereof. And the instrumentalities thereof can mean a lot of things, and it's not necessarily set in statute. So if, the general rule is, is if there is a substantial amount of public funds being expended by a subordinate group and the taxpayers are footing the bill, generally there might be some obligation to the QARA to produce records. Everything is observed on a case-by-case basis, and our enforcement team would look at the very specific details on how the funds are expended and how the orders are taken and how individual instrumentality thereof was created. And so if they're serving a substantial public function, there might be some justification for the QARA to apply in such a case. So there's that. Public records defined. So what is a public record? Well, public record is any reported information regardless of form, so this could include photos, it could include emails, and almost certainly will include emails. It may even include your private emails if you're not careful. If you're conducting public business on your private email, well, that could subject your personal email to the Kansas Open Records Act. And so that's something to be very cautious of, that you're using your official email accounts to conduct official public business. That's not something you want your personal emails getting out because you were being irresponsible with using your personal email account. So that's important to realize. It's happened a few times already that I've observed where personal emails have gotten out. So it's not something that's hypothetical, it's something that's very real. And so it's something to really be cautious of when you're deciding to use a personal email account. I think we have Hillary Clinton to kind of give us the grand example of why you shouldn't do that. So, there you have that. And so typically, otherwise, your personal materials, such as your cell phone email and text messages and all that, as long as you're keeping your public life separate from your personal life, your personal stuff is separate yours, it's not going to be touched by a open, but Kansas Open Records Act request. So, computer data is also subject to it, too. So anything you do on your public computer, if there's a way to get that data off of there, it could come out, because that's, that'd be an open record. So always be cautious of what you're doing. Maybe sometime it's not the best idea to send a funny meme on your office computer, right? See if you don't want to get it out. You should always operate with the conscious that your emails could become a public record any day. So always be respectful, responsible, and just professional with the emails that you send out to, to the public or to anyone, even in your inter-agency, because those emails could be subject to the Kansas Open Records Act. Okay. So provided you're not using your personal email for public business, your record's owned by a private person or yours. And so a private person is someone, is an officer or employee of a public agency that is acting pursuant to their official duties. Oh, sorry, if they're acting regarding their official duties, they are not a public, private person, they are a public person, and therefore that would subject their records to the Kansas Open Records Act. So if you're a member of the legislature, there might be some additional exemptions for you, and so it's best to consult your legal team at the legislature to ensure you're in compliance with the Kansas Open Records as far as your role is concerned in state government. Yeah, you are also not required to produce records that are not in existence at the time of the request. You also have no obligation to create records to fulfill a request. You also do not need to answer requests for information. Information is not a record. That is an important distinction. A record has, is a tangible thing, an email, a paper, a document, something. Information that you have to generate, consume, and to create something is not an open record, that's a request for information. You do not have to respond to a QARA request for information. He would simply deny that and do the proper three-day response, and you can't, you can't ignore it, but you, there's nothing to produce because information is not a record. All righty. Okay. These are the requirements that public agencies face when they are implementing QARA. So you must appoint a Freedom of Information Officer. So for the office- So, for the Office of the Kansas Attorney General, I serve in that role. There are other agencies, so the Kansas Bureau of Investigations, although it is under my office, they have their own Freedom of Information Officer. Because although we are their, they are a subordinate agency, the Office of the Kansas Attorney General, they are nonetheless a separate agency, and they will therefore have to have their own Freedom of Information Officer. You must also have some access for the public to review a brochure that makes available the information to them on what, how they can obtain records from your agency or entity, and how that information can be accessed during public hours. You must also include the name and title of your Freedom of Information Officer, your records custodian, and your fee schedule if you were to charge fees. The important thing about fees as you're determining what to charge is your fees must be reasonable, and it must also account for the work completed. You can't charge a hundred dollars just records fee, but you can charge for the actual time spent to procure and copy and redact those records. So, who can make an open records request? Best answer is any person. The U.S. Supreme Court took a stab at this, and they said the legislature could reduce and, or limit the people who could obtain those records. However, our legislature has not chosen to do that. So, therefore, anyone in the United States can request records from your body, no questions asked. Quite literally, no questions asked. You can't ask why. You just can ask, the only question you can really ask is just get some clarification if there's some ambiguity. If they want records, you can't ask them why. That reason is that for their knowledge only. In fact, they don't even have to provide a reason if they don't want. So, rights of the requestor. The public has a right to review all records for whether or not discretionary closed under the Kansas Open Records Act, or there's no mandatory closure under the Kansas Open Records Act. Any person may make copies, or have abstracts of these records. If copies cannot be made, you have to allow these individuals who are requesting their records to have access to them, to review them. And you must make arrangements for them to do the copying, if that's a problem. If portions of the records are closed, you have an obligation to give them the remaining record after redactions have taken place. So, you can't just redact the whole entire document, exclude the entire document just because there's some, one sentence that would be privileged information and exempt from Kansas Open Records Act disclosure. You must redact that portion, and then you must then present that document with the redactions. So, even if a tiny portion of the document is exempt from disclosure, you must take that portion out of the document and then give the requestor the remaining portion of the document. All right. So, there are some limitations on the rights of the requestor. You can require written consent, a name, an address. And you, in some cases, can require proof of identification to, before the records are produced. And the public agency is not required to produce videos. They can, they can watch them. You have no requirement to, these videotapes, recordings, and all that, to make copies of them. You can simply just schedule a time for them to come in and observe them, take notes. The only exception to this policy is if that document, that video, that recording or some sort was played in the public body meeting. Like, let's say there's a police recording played in the Wichita City Council that has been played in a public meeting. You have an obligation to therefore create and produce that record. That's, that's the exception. That's how you force yourself into that situation of having to produce that record. Of course, copyrighted materials. Those are going to be subject to disclosure if and only if there is permission from the copyright holder. So, we do have to follow federal copyright laws. And that would be, of course, an exception because state law, federal law, and of course, do oversee the, supersede the Kansas Open Records Act according to the first exception, which we'll discuss. Let's see, responding to the request. So, this is another important one. This prompts some confusion every now and then. So, you are required under state law to act upon, key word, act upon, not fulfill, the request within three business days. So, act upon means I do not have to fulfill the request. I don't have to produce all the records within those three days, period. I must only simply acknowledge the request. That's the key word, acknowledge that request. And then, ensure there is some reasonable follow-up that I, with that individual, that I am completing a the request, and that there is, I have completed the request, or I'm denying the request. And your initial response that you're acting upon, you must act upon one of those three acceptable responses. If you send one of those responses, you've acted upon the request. And so, that's important to realize. You have additional time. It's not a three-day, business-day mandate. You have to get those records done. It's simply three days to send one of those three responses out. And so, then you have reasonable time to fulfill the request. Let's say you have a thousand pages you got to redact. Like, realistically speaking, you aren't going to do that in three days. And so, you'll have the time you need to do to get those records done, provided it's a reasonable timeframe. And you can demonstrate that it's reasonable. So, this is kind of an example. So, this is our calendar. We're going to decide what three business days are. If I get a request on the tenth on this calendar, the eleventh is a holiday, so my first business day would be the twelfth. My next business day would be the fifteenth. And my third business day would be the sixteenth. My initial request is due by the sixteenth. So, it's, and to review, I have to send one of those three responses by that sixteenth date. So, I could say I don't have the records. I can deny. I can say I need more time to review these. Check, got my job done. I could say, here you go. The records are yours to keep. But you have to submit one of those three responses within three business days. And three business days, holidays are exempt. And the day that you receive the request does not count. So, you have three business days after that. So, let's say I get the request the fifteenth. I would have, my day one is sixteen, my day two is seventeen, my three, third day, and my due date is the eighteenth to send that initial response. All right. And this is the form of the request. Wrap it up. Okay, I think we're almost done. Okay, very good. So, the request, we can't require the request to be in writing. We can also require the name and address and the proof of identification. The other thing we can require is a written certification that the request will not use names and addresses. So, if the request is for names and addresses for record, of these records to solicit sales, that is an exception that we could deny the request for if they do not provide that certification. Fees must be actual cost. They must be reasonable. So, these costs include staff time. You can charge staff time, that's fine. You can also estimate the fees ahead of time and then present that balance that they're going to have to owe, then produce the records after you receive the fee. And so, that's okay, too. You can charge them upfront, wait for the payment to come in, and you can produce the records. Redactions. So, a record has that confidential material that would be exempt under the Kansas Open Records Act. You can do redactions. In fact, you're required to do redactions. And something I recommend always doing to save your city, your governing body, your school board, whatnot, from having to do some cleanup afterwards, is, there is an exception under forty-five dash two-two-one-A thirty, you can redact personal identifiable information. And so, I highly recommend your city have a policy of doing that so that way you don't find yourself in a situation releasing phone numbers, email addresses, and other personal information that could warrant an evasiveness of someone's privacy. And so, that's always a good thing to redact. Public agency can charge for staff time for redactions. So, there are many reasons to redact. You can look at Kansas statute annotated forty-five dash two-two-one. There's a whole list of things you can kind of look at. It's always good to consult your local legal counsel to ensure you're, A, complying with the law, and B, you're making the necessary redactions to protect your city from the release of information that, or your school board from information, release of information that you don't want getting out to the public. And you have the right to disclose. So, we also have statutes for mandatory disclosure. So, you're thinking forty-five dash two-two-one-A one. That's our catch-all for court rules, rules of evidence. You're talking about state statutes, federal U.S. Code and regulations. So, the Federal Education Protection Records Act, FERPA, student data, criminal history records, investigative reports, cases involving the Child Death Review Board would all fall under this catch-all exception for mandatory disclose, mandatory redaction. So, we would not be able to disclose these. So, always consult your city, or school boards, or other governing bodies, legal counsel, to ensure you're maintaining confidence in the records you're disclosing and not inadvertently releasing information that is closed under federal, state laws or regulation or other such governing documents, such as the rules of the Kansas Supreme Court. And so, the enforcement authority is, once again, the district attorney, county attorney, and the Kansas Attorney General's office. We have the form online for complaints for coma and CORA. And so, you don't want to sign one of these unless you're absolutely certain because there was an incident in Shawnee, Kansas, where a mayor filed a false report with someone else's name. So, always be careful. Don't only put your name because we will, we will come after you and the district attorney is for perjury. And so, of course, the five hundred dollar fines backing in for CORA. You can have to teach, take a course, or, and we can actually send you a cease and desist letter to not do that any longer. And yeah, we can also charge you a reasonable expenses[1728.72]